Good evening and welcome to the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning Board of Appeals. It's January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. You all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I see that we have a full board tonight. Unless someone recuses himself, Linda, you won't be voting. Okay? For any of you unfamiliar with the process here before the zoning Board of Appeals, there's an agenda up here. It's also available on the website. Each item will be called in its order on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, will be sworn, and describe its application. The board may have some questions for the applicant, and the public is welcome to comment on the application. In that regard, let's bring item number one, five sixty-six Vassar Road.
Hi. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Okay, just identify yourself.
Jennifer Silva, five sixty-six Vassar Road.
Okay. And you're still under oath. So I see that you've submitted, and I thank you for submitting some additional renderings of descriptions of fencing. Does the board have any questions? Christine?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm just looking at the photos. Thank you for sending them.
Okay.
Of course.
No questions.
Phyllis?
Again, I would say thanks for sending the pictures. And did you have a preference?
Um, well, I would prefer that one of the five-foot options, but all of the ones that I sent, I would be okay with.
Any of these styles?
The styles?
Well, there's, you know, the traditional picket fence. Then there's one that kind of lifts down and goes back up.
Um, yeah, I mean, I liked number three on the five-foot options because it does give some more privacy. But I would be open to the last option. I think option, was that five? Yeah, option five with the classic picket. Because I think that looks uniform and nice.
Number three is a four-foot fence.
Uh, yeah, limiting, describe, or why don't you address the four-foot ones?
Okay. All right, so we'll start at the four-foot. Of the four-foot, I mean, because it is shorter, I was hoping for a more solid look because you're losing the height. So at least cost me the privacy. But of those, I like two and three of the four-foot. And then on the five-foot options that I provided, I provided five, excuse me, I provided five of those. I prefer option three and five.
Any other questions, Phyllis?
I got it. Sorry. Yes, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Larry?
Of course, thank you.
Tony G. Nothing further. Linda, do you have any questions?
No, thanks.
Tony asked. Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, there's no one in the room, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. So unless, yes, go ahead.
I just had one other thing I wanted to ask you on the black and white photos. Never mind, I just read it wrong. Forget it, that's okay. My thought is that four and a half. Number four is a five-foot, got it.
Okay. All right, then, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I'm sorry I didn't mention this, but at the end of our agenda, we'll close the public hearings, and we'll have deliberations. At that time, no further evidences is taken, and we'll make a decision. You can either wait till that time or call the zoning administrator in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay. On the agenda, number two has been adjourned until March tenth. Number three, three Main Street. Anyone here for that?
Hi, good evening. Hi, I'm Dan Porter, Brooklyn Land Sign, engineer for the owner and applicant. And my right hand is Bill Don, he's the architect for the project. He's a workaholic. He's attorney, representing the applicant as well. Caitlin is online, listening in. She's the owner and applicant. And Dan will not be able to join us, unfortunately. We apologize for that, but.
Caitlin will fill him in later, so.
Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
And Caitlin? Will Caitlin be saying anything?
We don't anticipate it, but if there's any questions, she may jump in.
Okay. All right, why don't you describe the application?
So very briefly, I'll start off, and then I'll turn it over to Bill, who'll give you some more details of what's going on. But basically, it's a one-family house, and they're looking to do some updates related to some, kind of some wonky additions that are there now. They're looking to rebuild and also create a better outdoor living experience with a nice deck in the backside. So, Bill, would you mind just going through some of those things? And then I'll circle back and talk about the variances.
Yeah, you'll need to use that. Yeah, it's just quickly, as Dan said, there's existing addition. Well, the house is sort of a classic, two-and-a-half-story colonial, probably built between eighteen ninety and nineteen ten. Side hall, not center hall. Roughly twenty-seven feet wide by thirty-two feet deep. Over the years, an addition was added to the west side, which is the side facing toward the river. There's also some sort of ad hoc additions that were added on the north side in the back. None of them were really done with any sort of coherent design thought, to be generous. So the concept here was to take the space to the west of the stair because it's really the only place we could add on to the building, to rebuild the area on the west side that exists now, but to extend it up above and to bring the roof line of the whole house out and over. So when we're done, it won't really look like an addition. It'll look like the house is just a little wider than it is now. We're going, we're also proposing a large room at the basement level that sort of nestles into the grade because Point Street, is it Road Street? Point Street is considerably higher than the site as you drive up. There's a, it sort of sits down in a little bit of a hole. The existing addition in the back has the same sort of low, one-story addition roof. So we would kind of be replicating that. And then on the far west side, sort of tucked in behind, is where we're proposing the deck, which would be accessed off the first floor. So as you can see, at the first floor, you enter into the entrance hall. There's a sitting area, maybe like a little office, and then a walk-through to the kitchen area, which is sort of an L-shaped area. And then off the back would be the deck. This would be the roof of the basement addition. The reason we did it the way we did it was this is a flat roof hidden behind a parapet wall that sort of dies into this pitched roof. Obviously, the pitch roof can't be too high, or it'll block the windows on the first floor. So that's why we didn't make this a full-width pitch. We made the center area, the side area pitch. The side adjacent to the deck would be a flat roof and sort of tucked in out of view. The addition on the second floor would provide for a sitting area off the master bedroom to be a walk-through wardrobe in the existing part of the house, and then a master bath, and then an additional room in the front that could double as an office or maybe even a small guest bedroom. Right now, on the second floor, on the top of the existing addition, there's an outdoor deck. But that's the only real usable space on the second floor on this side of the building where we're proposing the addition. At the roof level, the only usable space we're really proposing is we're proposing a very shallow dormer off the back to relocate an existing bathroom that's up at the third, up at the attic level. But it's one of those bathrooms where, you know, it's in the decreasing headroom, so you tend to smack your head when you walk in the room if you're of any height. And to reproduce that deck that's on the second floor up here at the attic level because that's where you'd have the best view of the river. But that deck is tucked in underneath the roof of the whole building. I'll quickly show you a roof plan. So the idea was to continue the gable all across, and then this would be the shallow dormer providing the headroom in the bathroom. Quickly to look at the elevations. So the front elevation would basically be an expansion, almost one bay expansion of the existing, as I said, the roof. So this is the view from Main Street. So the roof we continue over, the facade we continue over, the porch roof would remain as it is. The street side, Point Street, you'd only really see, and you'd have to be backaways to see the little dormer up on the roof. And this would be the addition at the basement level, sort of replicating or replacing what was there before. The back elevation, again, the roof comes all the way across. This is the dormer for the bathroom. And this low roof down here, there's the deck, the low roof, the flat section, and then the pitch section, as you can see, pitched so that it doesn't come up in front of the windows. Then this is the side that faces the river. So that would be that recessed deck in underneath the roof structure. So again, the roof construction comes all the way out over, so it's actually like a covered deck.
So, not to interrupt you, but I think mostly we're concerned about the increasing encroachment on both the front lot line and the side lot line. So on the Point Street side and then on the west side. So can you describe that?
Sure.
That's very interesting about what's going to happen to the building.
Well, it's all part of the reason why we're asking for the variances, of course. So if I can just share my screen here. Okay, so basically, we did a over-under here. This is the existing conditions and demolition on the top part of the plan that you can see. Actually, I'm sorry, do you guys have monitors that you have to follow me? Okay. And then the bottom part is the proposed condition. So that goes through the additions that Bill had just described. So in general, the dashed area here where my cursor is represents that overhang. That's, it's not actually construction at the ground level. That's construction up above, kind of cantilevered over. And you have your deck here and your addition into the back. That's the newer basement floor addition to the side. So Point Street is here. It's a large right-of-way that really, for whatever reason, the actual property line in comparison to the edge of the pavement is pretty far off. But in this entire neighborhood, really, it's our twenty thousand square foot zoning here, a lot of undersized lots. And what you find is that you have a lot of lots that are pulled up close towards Point Street along the whole way. So what we're doing is we have a slight offset in our addition here, but as a result, we're still end up being two feet to the property line right at this last corner right here. In its existing condition, we have two point two here. So we're slightly exacerbating that by about two and a half inches or so. On the, on the side yard setback, so Point Street and Main Street, we have two frontages here, which means that they both have to meet their front yard. Seemed that the most appropriate, if you face the house here towards Main Street, so we have a side yard on the westerly side. What you have is nine and a half feet from the porch to, the existing porch, to the western property line. And as a result of placing the deck with the steps that we need to get down to grade, we end up being slightly closer at four point seven feet. So there's twenty foot there. Now, if you look at the concept of if we had to have thirty foot setback from Point Street and a twenty foot from the westerly line, we only have a fifty point zero eight foot lot, which means we have no building envelope at all. So we're trying to work the best we can with what we have, of course, being a nineteen-ten or so, or maybe even earlier, construction for the house, but trying to correct some of the things that are a little bit out of order right now. Then, then the third variance, so you get the two area variances for the yard setbacks. The third is the building coverage. I had a nice meeting with Chrissy, and Chrissy explained to me what counts as building coverage. So despite the overhang being kind of cantilevered, it's not actually touching the ground. We actually count that towards the building coverage, and we count all the deck area towards the building coverage. So unfortunately, our building coverage actually goes up as a result of this, but we're at thirty-two point six percent where twenty-five percent is allowed. So we're seeking seven point six percent relief on that end.
The steps leading off of the deck, those count in the encroachment?
Not usually, but that's a landing, right?
The, yeah, right where the cursor is is a landing, and then there's steps that go off both sides.
That would count. If the steps went right into the deck, the steps wouldn't count, but because it's a landing.
If I took a measurement from there, it might be more like four point eight feet or so.
Okay. And tell me, what's the increase in encroachment into the side line?
So it's nine point five?
From, what's the increase in encroachment from existing?
So right, right now, existing is nine point five feet, and we're making that less to four point seven towards the landing of the deck.
All right, so it's just a couple of feet?
Yeah.
Greater?
Yes, please.
All right. And the deck, realistically, the water's going to flow through the deck, right?
I'm sorry.
Water will flow through the deck, I mean?
Yes, yeah. It's, it's, the slats, it'll, it'll actually drain to the ground, yeah.
Okay. And is it fair to say that none of the additions, well, first of all, on the west side, the additions, that's all open space to the river, right? There's no, there's no, the neighbors don't have any buildings there that's?
That's correct.
Okay. And is it fair to say that the additions, the additions will have no other impact on the visibility of any of the easterly residents? Is that fair to say?
It is fair to say that we, as Bill had mentioned, the backside of this property is low.
Right.
Point Street's up high, plus there's actually a hedgerow along Point Street that will help, that actually blocks every view right now of basically what you can see. So this will not impede any further views from anybody on the opposite side of Point Street.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No, like any Hamburglar lot, not a whole lot you can do down there without variances.
I have no questions.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
So the addition off the back, that's all below grade, right?
Correct.
With the hedgerow even factored in, it's all below grade, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. No, that's all.
Linda?
No questions.
Tony G.
Yeah, no questions.
All right, anyone?
Before you close, I'd just like to note, we did get three letters from neighbors, and you have those? Okay, thank you.
I do, and I was going to mention those, but thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? If you'd unshare your screen? Thank you. There's no one in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. As one pointed out, there are three neighbors who commented on this application, all in favor of it, and those will be made part of the record. No one else here for the questions, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Thank you very much. You can wait around, it's going to be about seven minutes before I want you to proceed.
Thank you.
You don't want to take a break?
All right, that brings us to item number one. We've had a number of discussions about fences in the front yard. The applicant was kind enough to address our issues and submit a number of alternate.
We have to bring in number four and adjourn. Oh, we adjourned number four.
What's that? Oh, is there another one?
Adjourned number four.
Oh, yes, okay, I'm sorry. There was item number four, Dish Wireless, nine eleven Raymond Avenue. There's a request to adjourn that, so I'll move to adjourn that to February tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, and so the applicant was kind enough to address all our issues about their application for a six-foot fence in the front yard. They have submitted some ones for five and a half feet or five feet, and some ones for four feet. I am particularly concerned about fences, front yard fences, greater than three and a half feet. However, I think that the ones for four feet will probably be okay in light of the fact that their front lot line is set back somewhat from the roadway. And the applicant has indicated that either two or three would be acceptable to them. If, I would be inclined to grant a four-foot variance, limited to either number two or three in the applicant's application. That would be my recommendation. Does anybody have any concerns?
I, I agree. At four feet, I think either one would, wouldn't give you that compound look.
Okay. And it's, Lisa, if we limit it to the choice of the applicant subject to their application of items number two or three in the four-foot variance, in the four-foot variety, is that permissible?
Yeah, so it's a two-foot variance, right, no.
Half a foot.
Six-inch variance.
Right.
And, right, on the installation of a four-foot fence and item two or three. We can write that.
Okay, fine. Art, you have any concerns or?
No, I agree with you, but I, you know, personally, I like the one that's got the pickets rather than solid. I would go with either one. My preference would be number three of the four-foot fence.
You talking about this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that one too, but I think I'm not going to limit my, I mean, they said either two or three.
I'm, I'm good.
Phyllis?
No, I'm, I'm fine with either two or three at a four-foot height, and I appreciate the family's willingness to work with the board. It's been a long ride and forth. It's been good.
Larry?
Nope, I just second Phyllis's thoughts.
Okay. Linda, you have any comments?
No.
Tony, do you have any comments?
No questions. I mean, I think either of them should be fine.
Then, let me make these recommendations. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. I think the applicant's limitation or reduction in their request down to a four-foot or a four-foot fence or a six-inch variance minimizes the change or impact on the environment and the neighborhood. And whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, there is no other way based upon the fact that this is a corner lot with two front yards for them to achieve what they, the result that they request. And whether it's area variance is substantial, I think the six inches is not substantial. And whether the proposed variation, variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition, there's no evidence of that. And although the difficulty was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. So Christine, do you mind making a motion?
Sure. That's number? I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. And?
So just to be clear, we're granting a six-inch variance?
For a six-inch variance.
And the conditions would be that it comports with either items, the four-foot ones in either item two or three that the applicant submitted?
Right. Okay, so move.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And again, thank you very much for your, for taking everything into account that we requested from you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and that brings us to item number three. So there are three variances here. And I would point out that all those, well, most of those lots in that area are substandard lots, and it's impossible to do anything without getting a variance. It's certainly on the front lot line, I think it's just an increase of two or two and a half inches into the front lot line. The side lot line on the west side is a couple of feet, but there's nothing on the neighbor's property that really encroaches. There's, you know, some vegetation there. There's a barrier that I think would minimize any impact of encroachment on the side lot line. And the fact that there's an increase in impervious area, I think, is kind of mitigated by the fact that it's, some of it comes from an overhang, and some of it is from a deck. So I think that the impact of the impervious area is kind of minimized by that. So I don't have any objections to granting this variance. Does anybody have any concerns?
No concerns.
Okay. Then let me offer these. Whether an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of the variance, it appears from the application and the architectural drawings that this will actually improve the property, and it won't have any change, certainly not have any change in the character of the neighborhood as most of those lots in that area are substandard and encroach upon all the lot lines. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, again, due to the substandard lots, it's impossible to do any real work without variance. And whether the area variance is substantial, on the front lot line, it's just a few inches more than the existing property, and so that's not substantial. On the side lot line, it's just a few feet, and I think that's minimized by the topography and the vegetation that's there. And regarding the impervious area, I think that that's minimized by the fact that some of it comes from an overhang and from an open deck. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence of that. While, of course, this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. So Art, do you mind making that application?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye? Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When do you think this will be done? Summer? Because we want to go by and see it.
I'm not sure. We'll send an email in and let you know.
Yeah. It'd be nice to see it completed.
Thank you.
Okay, and then there's one lead agency request from the town of Bucipsi Planning Board to Pendell Road. This is a proposal for an installation of a wireless tunnel communication facility comprising a 150-foot-high monopole, a fenced compound with supportive ground equipment, an antenna, and three future carriers. So I move that we accept the planning board's request for a lead agency on this item.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then unless there's any other business, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.